Okay. Uh, next I need to have an opportunity for the citizens to comment. Could you do me a favor? Could you grab that sheet, please? Um, for citizens to provide comments to our city council, and we do have a couple signed up. Uh, Joyce Schmidt. Hi, Joyce.
I'm just gonna vouch all out, but I'm not going to.
Do you want to get together at another time? I'm happy to, happy to. Okay. Uh, Kit and Jen Francis.
Uh, Kit and Jennifer Francis, I know five of them. First, we want to say thank you to everyone that's provided so much feedback and support of the brand and the building aspect here. Well, they've started new work behind the, behind our homes on the sixth edition phase one. And it's looking pretty good. It's looking really good. They, they haven't laid down the cover yet, but there's still a foundation furthered out. Uh, this, this really looking impressive and we're really optimistic. Uh, hopefully that work continues going through, waiting for property too, and it just doesn't dead end. The other thing we want to talk about. The other thing we want to talk about is fiber. We have additional fiber going in some Golden Hills again. And this is not a new thing that's been discussed here. It, it is, it is widely different than the previous installation. And uh, we're really concerned about redundant boxes, trenches. Uh, they're, they're doing things entirely different this go around. Whole, I sent a picture, uh, about that's accessible to the email.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, of one of the wide swaths of sidewalks that was taken out with water, they apparently hit something and some. Uh, I don't know what happened there, but it was a mess. And it's nothing like the first company that had come in. It would be great if the city could consider alternatives for shared infrastructure. Uh, such as, and this is, I'm no way technical here, uh, just a quick Google search and uh, these are a few options like shared conduits, uh, neutral host models and coordinated placement departments. Some of these things can really alleviate some of this multi placement. It's, it's just ridiculous. And um, I didn't get a chance to see the harvest of all, but now we're experiencing something. And this is not going to be until it's ongoing, especially with the fact that we have a third company that seems to be on the top today.
Tearing up yards, it's tearing up streets, sidewalks, the whole sidewalk up and down Golden Hills is now inaccessible. People, the strollers, wheelchairs cannot access the sidewalks.
Thanks for hearing us.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else wish to provide comments to our city council members? How about those that are joining us via Zoom? Going once, going twice. Okay, thank you very much, and we'll move on to our minutes. Excuse me. You've had an opportunity to review the minutes from our September ninth regular city council meeting. And if there's no uh, changes to that, I accept the motion to approve those.
So moved.
So.
Think of a motion and second to approve our minutes from our September ninth meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Rosena, thank you. Our minutes are approved. Not sure who's gonna do vouchers and payroll today, since Cindy's not here. Um, did you want to do that? Thank you.
Uh, the voucher is for one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three, six hundred and fifty, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. And uh, that will be it. And the finance committee reviewed these items, so I would go for full.
I'll second that.
Thank you. A motion and second to approve the vouchers as presented. Any questions about the vouchers? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rosena, okay, thank you very much. Vouchers are approved. I can see that small contract with bacon concrete to um, do some work at Veterans Park. That's up and running right now. We are gonna skip over the swearing in for Mr. Davies, Officer Davies, until next um, next council meeting, so I'll defer that until next council meeting. We don't have any appointments. We do have a few action items, and the first one is resolution F four one one. This is the conservation covenant, Todd.
Yeah, this, uh, as you well know, uh, we purchased a while back about two hundred acres just north of our weblands and uh, into twenty twenty-one. And the additional surrounding, this is a conservation easement uh, that we've been working with that would allow us to um, I'm gonna have probably been selling out on some of the terminology. I used to call the old term webline banking. We were able to kind of identify just over a hundred and six acres of, of uh, conservation easement that we could actually uh, it, it, it's somewhat of a purchase sale, but it is really not a, a needed sale. It's just a, an easement, so to speak. And uh, that would be with uh, High Tower Business Park LLC and Big Spark LLC, and they're, they're actually located out in the, in the airport, that's where the airport area. Um, the annoying rate, as you've seen down through there, is about four thousand dollars uh, an acre and one point four hundred and six point four acres. That gives us uh, roughly four hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred. Uh, coming off of that, just a little bit, it'll be about a fifteen plus thousand dollar uh, payment into SS three R's. This part of the department. For uh, for the development and all the work that went into developing this, going out in the field and so. Um, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. This, this fund, these funds were paid out of wastewater. So I, I would uh, expect that the funds would be deposited back into the super fund because they're the ones that spent the, the money put up. So with uh, we have the issue of any questions.
Excited. Any questions for Todd? Yes, please, Tina.
Question, um, and maybe you could just explain this a little better to me. I was a very impression. I guess my question is, is um, and we're selling to a private company. Is that correct for an easement to use the property?
Yeah, we, we maintain the, the deed to the property itself. We're just, just selling the, the conservation easement, so.
Yeah, so the payment comes from a, a private company, a developer, goes to us, and then we're basically, the covenant goes, we're the grantor. The grantee actually becomes the Department of College. So the state holds the.
But that's what I thought, but then I saw a private company, so I just wasn't sure how that translated.
Kind of a three-way.
Okay.
But yeah, they're, they're paying us, and then we're keep basically deeding and we're giving to the the grant, excuse me, we're the grantor, they're the grantee, and it's Department of College.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any question? I guess, go ahead. Paul?
Mark, go ahead. Um, and there's no time limit on us to grant, so that property just sits vacant as a.
Conservation easement is uh, petal.
Yeah, and it's, it's that property too that we want to sit. We definitely don't ever want to use it for anything else, but wastewater.
Yeah, I mean, really any property that we, we have around the wastewater treatment plant uh, that, that creates just additional bumper, uh, that, that we'd like to, you know, kind of have, obviously, around wastewater treatment plant we want. This just creates an, an additional bumper right off, but and, and not to say that, if I'm missing correctly, um, really our, our under eight core lands trail system within the walk-in, you know, um, conservation easements, you know, pretty much half of the two hundred that we bought. So there's still possibly some recreation on the other side and, and probably to say that we could go walk in there or whatever, but that, that's the intent is to protect the uh, the weblands in those areas. And that's, that's really what the conservation easement is about, is to make a statement that we're not going to disrupt the, the land or.
Right, and then second, um, how much money does wastewater have invested in that seven-six acres?
Well, the, the, the package deal back in, in uh, I think twenty twenty-one was, there was just a little over two hundred acres in, in that portion of it. Plus another meeting out of Front Street, and we were mostly interested with the, with the, the, the Front Street property. Because that's just where our um, basically headworks is, is on the, on the, on the railway. And by taking advantage of that property back there, we could make a move uh, back in that area and own that property. So we were mostly interested in the, in the eighteen acres, but the cost that they were asking at that type of eighteen acres. Uh, I think the decision was, well, we'll just make a full package deal uh, on, on both. And so we did, we did end up buying over two hundred, two hundred eleven acres like their amendment, and then eighteen, which is right out front street.
Yeah, and how much?
Five hundred. Five hundred, big enough.
Getting a lot of our money back for sure. Paul?
No, good question, because that's why we, we bought that for this pension where happens to be Vince, Vince's expertise, and we knew there was gonna be some other uh, wetland mitigation needs in other parts of the county that. So in essence, we've kind of created our own little mini Turnbull out there for our, for our purposes. And uh, first and other, we've talked about this, it been that our wastewater rate payers purchased this property uh, in twenty twenty-one, and we don't have a, a whereas line in the resolution, but just for the record, we talked about it, and I still insist that any of the proceeds, this four twenty-five is, is just one of the proceeds. There will be some more probably future. The, those funds should stay within the wastewater department, stay with our wastewater rate payers, and to be used for similar purchases in future, not to buy down rates, but for other investments. This was a quite frankly, very good investment that'll show return for many, many years, so I'm very pleased with the outcome. With that, I'll move forward unless there's any further for approval of resolution F dash four one one.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to approve resolution F four one one, our conservation covenant. Any final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rosena, thank you, Todd. Oh, and one abstention, yes. Uh, so resolution F four one one passes. Mr. Marx, resolution F four thirteen, the Fort Lake Substation Fiber Optic Connection Project. Hi, Steve.
Uh, this is Fortland Substation Fiber Optic Connection Project on brand defined and fiber both sub, sub stations. Now, now, now if you do that, it's eleven hundred and sixty-seven east of Smiths East down Jensen Road. Run up Jensen, then we'll cross this substation, then we can put a cat till the supplier there to put the anti-meters. Then we do all this, and then we can run to the control house. And the control house has all of the equipment, and that, that will enable us to connect to the control house with the SCAD system, which is the supervisor who controls that added position. System to manage and give feedback on that. This was not originally funded, but we're re-appropriating twenty thousand dollars to Cindy's approval. Another big capital project, and like I said, it's a great opportunity to get this job done now. So, any questions?
And Steve, any questions for Steve on this? Excuse me. No?
Honor, if there's no questions, I think I'll have to approve after four thirty.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to approve resolution F four thirteen, the Fort Lake Substation Fiber Optic Connection Project. Any final comments or questions?
Says been discussed in public works. I recommend Steve for the agenda, and we put in there the budget amount and the explanatory request. As well as in budgets, like work.
Thank you. I do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Rosena, thank you. Resolution F thirteen passes. Todd, your backup. Resolution F four fourteen, National Opioid Settlement Participation.
Yeah, I'm gonna, uh, I'm, oh, go ahead. It's here, so uh, basically, it's authorized in the city to sign a participation agreement relating to the allocation of opioid settlement. Fifty percent of settlements are dispersed to counties and cities. Yeah, fifty of city receive. You can see that percentage up here. Uh, the settlement agreement was provided approximately seventy-five thousand, seven hundred uh, over about fifteen. Uh, with this, uh, I don't know credit or didn't they give money, but I'll try to answer questions if I can answer questions on that.
Thanks, Todd. Questions for Todd on us accepting this opioid settlement money? Okay, it's a pleasure.
Real quick.
Yes, uh, actually, go ahead, Jackie.
Yeah, um, I just want to say, um, I think it's fantastic that we're potentially getting this money because with the budget shortfalls we've seen with PD and FIRE, this is, at least will help offset some of those costs to the city.
Got you. Thanks, Jackie. Thank you. I have a motion and second to approve resolution F four one four, the National Opioid Settlement Participation Agreement. All in favor, say aye.
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 Rosena, thank you. Resolution F four one four passes. Resolution F four fifteen, uh, REIT funding for the Aquatic Center construction. Go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, we're getting close to, uh, close to final bill and, and everything else. So this is an additional uh, four hundred thousand going into the construction funding, which raises that refund up to uh, one point two five uh, billion uh, off of the thirteen million dollar bond. Uh, this is total project cost on there, as you recall, the, the um, pool contract itself came in as eleven, uh, into the add tax on the pathway. Uh, pretty close to almost twelve point five hundred. Uh, this, this exclusive of the REIT also pays for the additional playground that we got. Uh, it also kind of covers the, uh, all of the alternate bids that we came back with as far as all the, all the amenities to the pool. And then also covers uh, uh, the change orders. So uh, just as a, a snapshot, eleven million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand uh, project uh, among the, the, the actual change orders to that, about only four point five percent of all the other ones in that area.
What, you say four point one?
Okay, happy to answer. Any questions?
Thanks, Todd. Any questions or comments for Todd? Go ahead, Mark.
Uh, just one quick one. Do you know how much that leaves left in the REIT account?
I would ask Cindy, and I, I, that'd be a form of a question for Cindy at that end.
Yeah, we, we can get that to him, for sure.
Alright, yeah.
It's still healthy.
It's so.
It's not voting to bury this, am I?
Hold on for the approval of F dash four one five.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F four one five, the REIT funding for our new aquatic center. Final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Rosena, thank you, Todd. Resolution F four fifteen passes. Okay, Steve, ordinance, excuse me, ordinance Y ninety-one, the AT&T franchise license, and you are just, are you looking for the first read only?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this would be the first we, we provide in line this month. It's a franchise agreement with Orange Fiber Thirty-Seven LLC, which is a Williams subsidiary of AT&T. And that'll be uh, doing AT&T's for AT&T's and process of purchasing Lumen's uh, fiber system, not the telephone system, the fiber to do to city. So this will be the first screening. It's a standard contract, like that I went over, the deal share with them. So minor changes and things for the smooth process. So having said that, is there any questions concerns fractures?
So because of what we used to know as century, old century length, century, you know, century, whatever, now Lumen, and now whatever. Um, and century length already, or century length or century tail already have the, um, fiber group, they have service through on our poles. You guys just say, they're gonna stay on the poles?
Well, once on the poles, what they're purchasing for fiber, then you have a telephone system at certain points that is a century length. Or what they had a couple of years ago, and they also have underground.
Okay.
Fiber underground, which in this case, if they, they purchase this, their vault's already established. Their fibers in the ground, so it won't be invasive in certain neighborhoods where they're already set. They're just name flip switches. So we won't see the digging and, you know, new construction, yes, in areas, uh, if you'll see that, but this will be less intrusive. People are desperate to make the other. But they will, there's a whole attachment agreement probably coming next month. Uh, they overlook that, and so unless you're gonna keep everything underground, you can't get underground to go over it, so. Well, I'll tell them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna kind of reiterate what we heard earlier about the, the digging underground, and I know we kind of talked about this a few times, um, and I, my understanding is, we don't really have an option with the franchise agreements, right? We kind of have to, if you let one person come in, we kind of have to let them all, but is there a way to somehow limit the instructions we'll see?
Either we're authorizing them to work in the right of way. We have to, we have to allow them to do it on the same terms that others do. There, they, we require they restore the property and those kinds of things for the condition it was in. Like Steve mentioned, this one's gonna be less intrusive though, because this is, you know, Lumen selling this piece of their operation over to AT&T. Normally what we would do is an assignment, an assumption agreement, so that you just take that contract that Lumen, the franchise Lumen currently has and transfer it over to AT&T. This, in this case, we're not doing that, um, two reasons. Once, it's, sounds like Lumen is gonna repeat some of their, it's their need to be in the right of way for the phone, and also AT&T wants to get ahead and do some bigger, we're assuming that this purchase and sale just there. It's not actually closed yet.
No, our expectation is going to be here.
Yeah. So we do have some things in the, the franchise agreements that requires them to restore it.
And if I remember correctly, we'd kind of talked about uh, potentially upping the amount of, I mean, it's wrong term, like a bond essentially. If they don't read.
We did get them to increase their insurance requirement substantially. Normally, we require a million and then a three million per claim, three million aggregate for this one. I think we got two and five.
Thank you.
The current bond from existing is five thousand.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, I think here, but previous ones on top, yes.
So, yeah. We're just, they're pinned, but we shouldn't get these folks in here before for nothing. Now we got them lined up. And we don't have any control because it's state and Fed. All we have, all we get to do is the dirty work to make sure they clean up after themselves, and it is the other part we don't talk about is you can never get rid of this crap whatever right away. We've had poles left for years. They won't get them out. We have no control over that, so there needs to be some work, not at our level, but the state and Fed, because this is getting ridiculous. And yeah, they come in and they'll cut through your sprinkler lines, bust up the sidewalk, tear up the yard, then you gotta go run them down, get, fix it. It's all on us, so. I don't know. Anyhow, there's, we don't really have a whole lot of discretion about it, and we got bird dog them. And now who's the next one? I mean, how many fiber companies do we need? This is getting stupid, but you gotta let them in or they'll take us to court. Okay, flies, and then they get to going anyhow, but it is a burden for our staff to, you know, go and clean up after them or get them to clean up. And, but it's, I wish there's an other way you could explain it, but there really isn't. They have the right. It's right away. It's public right away, governed by the states, so. I guess we can do efficient.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
We, we had talked about this a little bit in public works, that what would it look like if we did put our own conduit in the ground? Um, is that a possibility for that to happen? I know that the state.
You don't have to choose to use it.
They don't, that was my question. So they don't have to choose to use it.
Oh, so this will be charged. Why would you do that for you?
So they could ask monthly.
Yeah, I would, I could, but yeah, I, I like the idea. There might be some ways to do that, but by the time we get there, then move on to some other things. But yeah, it's, it's difficult.
So Mike, there's no way for us to require in a code that we bank, even though it's a state right of way? We write a code just for our city that says you have to use our conduit in, in the right of way?
No, I don't think we can do that. We just have to provide them access to the right of way to rent our own lines. They probably come up with a million technical reasons why would they want to put in there as better than what we offer.
Okay. And then my second question would be, um, why are they working on this now when we haven't finalized this ordinance?
I don't think they are.
I don't believe they're actually getting any work yet.
AT&T isn't doing any work.
No.
They're not. That's one of the other four.
Oh, so there's somebody working in Golden Hills right now.
Oh, yeah.
That's Tom.
Okay, they're the ones that were busted.
So Golden Hills, along with Peyton, Peyton Holmes, will have them come in another month?
But we can probably next, right?
Okay.
If, if the sale goes through, they're prepositioning to get out of heat. Okay, that's, so.
Just on that grass, it's looking. A couple of bows under your.
You're right, Paul. I'll just echo what Paul said. You know.
You know.
Uh, I would move for the first reading of, uh, that's, where's the number?
Sunday one.
Ninety-one, thank you. In Taiwan summary form only, and that subsequent meetings be brought, most subsequent meetings.
Thank you. I have a motion and second for the first reading of ordinance Y ninety-one, forged fiber thirty-seven LLC uh, franchise agreement entitled in summary form only, and that subsequent readings be brought forth to you all in subsequent council meetings. Any final questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rosena, Charlie.
And ordinance of the City of Cheney, Washington, granted sport fiber thirty-seven LLC and non-into struck operate and maintain a fiber optic telecommunications system within the City of Cheney, Washington, send forth their conditions accompanying the grant of the franchise.
Thank you, Shelley. Moving on to, are you doing this next one too? No, Todd, Todd's doing this next one. Uh, ordinance Y ninety-two, this is the out-of-city business threshold increase. Another statement date.
I, I could make the housekeeping thing, but I will, I will add some, add some context to this. Obviously, this is a, a business license exemption threshold by raising from two thousand to four thousand. Uh, they're asking, uh, that, that the city required the amendment to the municipal vote incorporate the model exemption section later than October first, so they can enact that the change of reverse of Jordan. So like I say, you, you just read, uh, the underlying, uh, section one, uh, there, it just explains beginning January twenty twenty-six. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Todd, you sort of, this by October first?
It's where you just.
Statement of the sentence. I would, I suggest three weeks.
Yeah, the state has seventy-five day notice requirement. And so they've told all the cities participating in the licensing services, get it to us October first. Shelley followed up with them, and they said, wow, for real, we're talking seventeen.
Okay, okay, so we can send our, one meter, our seven one by a casey.
Any questions for Todd on this, just abiding by the state's new regulations?
Can we, uh, get our first and last reading?
That's up to you all, yeah.
Let's get it out here.
Honor, if there are no further questions, I move for the first reading of, uh, ordinance I ninety-two in Taiwan summary form only, and that the first reading can be considered the second, and the second is considered the third, and placed the final pass.
Second, aye.
Wonderful. Uh, okay, so I have a first, uh, a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance Y ninety-two, the out-of-city business threshold. a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance Y ninety two, the out of city business threshold increase entitled in summary form only. And that the first reading be considered the second and the second reading be considered the third and that it be placed before you all for final passage. Any final questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay? Uh Shelley, go ahead.
In accordance of the City of Cheney, Washington amending the exemption threshold for business licensing requirement and other matters brought properly.
Thank you, Shelley. Council member Oberhauser, council member Schmidt.
Aye.
Council member Bartels.
Aye.
Council member Belloc.
Aye.
Council member Nazaro.
Aye.
Council member Labarre. And council member Postum.
Aye.
Thanks, Todd. Ordinance Y ninety two passes. And that concludes our action items. Uh Todd, do we have any staff reports?
Same, the the fiber in this podcast, um the the first go around was actually disaster. We had companies going all over town and not going back and cleaning up their mess. So uh city down since we do hold the right way uh license or right way for that on that, I believe, and we're holding it to five and prevent it to sign it. I know there were five residents. They do their work. We take a look at it, we'll permit the next five. So we are holding them up now. We're not letting them unshut in all ways to town. We're trying to get some type of systems.
Thanks, Todd. Uh from my report, I attended the Eastern's convocation today and watched the new students do the pass through the pillars, which if you've never seen that, it's a fantastic tradition that Eastern has. Brand new students, they they're down on College Street and they make their way with the band and swoop and the cheerleaders all the way through the pillars there at Showalter, all the way up. And there's people lining the streets, cheering them on and welcoming to Eastern and Cheney. Um it's a fantastic event. Um we put in the double decker buses on Saturday, so we did a ribbon cutting for the double decker buses. And those double decker buses are servicing Cheney alone. So when you see them, they are moving community members and students um only, so pretty cool to have double decker buses in Cheney. Uh and that's all I have. Teresa. Paul?
Uh I traveled to Seattle for the A D C Board of Trustees meeting. And already mentioned to carry uh our role, of course, is for the medical benefits for all our city employees throughout the state of members. The good news is we get to continue the great medical benefits and coverage that we currently offer. The not so good is we're not gonna get by so cheap as we had the last couple years. Be some significant increases. So I'll I'll bring back some more information for that for our budget, but that'll be that.
Okay, thanks, Paul. That's.
Nothing to say.
Jackie.
Um I just wanted to welcome all of the students and um do we have an update on what's going on with the planning commission and the next phase of the comprehensive plan and where we're at deadline wise with like the county and stuff as well?
Yeah, I can answer that. I I apologize if you're just uh uh really busy. We're still working with Nexus and having uh every other week meetings. And we will be bringing an update on the planning commission. Uh when we 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 took a look at trying to do another planning commission this last go around, we have, we had a few uh verbal absences. So October, we will, we will hit it hard. We will bring back uh the Nexus, the updated, the comprehensive plan, and then we're continuously through twenty twenty six.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Jason?
Uh I was just gonna say, Steve, the banners look really great around.
Yeah, I wanted to only echo what he's had. I've gotten tons and tons of positive feedback from those banners. So thanks, Steve. Your crew got that up pretty quickly. So thanks. Well, we don't have any other items on our agenda, so I have a motion and a second to adjourn our meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bye, Jackie.
Bye.